I'd like to call the January 13th regular meeting of the Peters Township Planning Commission to order. May we have a roll call?
Mr. Mills will not be here tonight. Mr. Kartaphilis?
Here.
Mr. Magrino?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Quirbo?
Here.
And Conrad Selepus will not be here tonight.
Okay. We need a nomination and election of chairman for the 2022 reorganization. Could I have a nominee for chairman, please?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Jeff Mills.
I'll second the nomination.
We have a nomination for Jeff Mills to be chairman. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Jeff Mills is now chairman. In lieu of Jeff not being here, I'm going to continue on for a nominee and election of vice chairman for 2022. May I hear a nomination for that? And I'd like to nominate Mr. Aaron Smith for vice chairman.
Second.
So we have a nominee and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to pass the gavel to Mr. Smith.
Next item. We need to nominate a designee as an alternate signee of Platts for 2022. I'll volunteer for that.
Dave Wiley?
Yep. You want to go ahead and vote on that?
Designate.
Okay, who designated? Okay. Next, to establish the regular meeting dates and times for 2022. Do we need to change that?
It's up to you.
Is everyone good to continue on with our current schedule? Second Thursday, 7:00 p.m.? Special meeting date and time for 2022? Can you remind us?
It's usually the fourth Thursday of the month at 7:00 p.m.
Is everyone still good with that? I don't think we had to have a special meeting last year here.
We did not.
All right. Regarding the planning commission appointing to the traffic calming committee, Mr. Kartaphilis has volunteered to do that.
Got it.
Without objection. Moving on to the regular meeting.
We don't have to do it.
Roll call again? I don't think so. We can. Can I get a motion to approve or any commentary on the minutes from the November 11th, 2021 regular meeting? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any reports in correspondence?
None.
Any site plans submitted for the?
No. None.
Any changes to the agenda this evening?
No.
Any audience comments on items not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no change to the old business?
No.
Moving to new business. Item 8A, planning commission recommendation regarding the McKay re-subdivision, Sugarwood Drive and Bauerhill Road.
Doug and Jennifer McKay, owners of both 230 Bauerhill Road and 101 Sugarwood Drive. They're seeking township approval to shift the shared lot line between these two lots. Like I said, they own both properties. Mr. McKay is seeking to sell the property on 101 Sugarwood and make the property on Bauerhill his permanent residence because he shares both, owns both properties. I think he's just trying to give himself a little bit more space in the backyard for the house on Bauerhill Road. For this subdivision plan, obviously that Lot 1 would be slightly larger in size, increasing to just under an acre in size, and reducing the size of Lot 126R on Sugarwood to 0.685 acres in size. These are two existing lots, both zone low-density residential, maintaining all of our compliance regards to lot size and width and standards of that kind. Staff is making a recommendation of approval, subject to the four conditions listed in my January 5, 2020 report.
Hey Seth, can I just make a comment? In your memo on the second page, it says increasing Lot 1. It should be 1.989, right?
That's probably correct. I apologize.
Okay, that's fine.
Any audience comments? Hearing no audience comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of the McKay subdivision as outlined in the memo dated January 5, 2022, and along with the four conditions outlined in the memo.
I'll second. Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to, I think the planning commission recommendation, if I can pronounce this wrong, Zehalski and Jenkins slash Nixon re-subdivision, Justabout Road.
This is a bit of an interesting one. We have two pieces of land on Justabout Road that are currently zoned rural residential. We were zoned rural residential as part of the 2017 comprehensive rezoning for the township. At that time, these were then made non-conforming lots of record because the minimum lot size in rural residential is five acres. Neither of these properties, as it stands today, meet that standard. One is just over an acre in size, the other is under an acre in size. So when they came to us with the proposed subdivision plan to just do a little lot line shift, it kind of triggered a couple of extra steps in the process for us. We're looking at this as staff as, it's not really a big deal of concern from us in regards of the granting of a variance, but they are going to have to go before the township zoning hearing board because technically speaking, one of these non-conforming lots of record will be made slightly more non-conforming, and that will be getting slightly smaller. We're going to take them in front of the zoning hearing board in February. We had planned on taking them next week, but some procedural issues that lined up with the applicant, so we're just going to push it to February. It's not a big deal. They use the property as is. There's a big tree line really that they're trying to get into their property, so for them, it's not the end of the world. I just need a couple more items from them before I can proceed through the zoning hearing board. As I mentioned, these are two existing non-conforming lots of record. They've made such as part of the rural residential rezoning in 2017. The ultimate request for Mr. Nixon, who owns Lot 2 revised as shown on the screen, is for a 3.75 acre variance to the minimum required lot width of five acres. So on paper, it's a pretty sizable variance request, but when you look at the context of what happened here in the properties and zoning district, it's really not a big deal in terms of for staff's opinion. So we'll be taking them with a favorable recommendation to the zoning hearing board in February. We just wanted to bring them before planning commission tonight to kind of expedite the process as best we can. We're not really looking at this time for a recommendation to the zoning hearing board. We're looking for a recommendation on the actual subdivision plan so that once we potentially get a variance from the zoning hearing board, we can go right to council for final approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Staff is making a recommendation that the subdivision plan be approved, subject to the four conditions listed in my staff report.
What is the purpose of the lot line change?
Yeah, as I mentioned, you see the tree line there, right in the middle of the two lots. Mr. Zehalski currently utilizes, I believe, the back right portion of the property, his property, in this area. That's technically on his neighbor's side of the tree line, but in essence, looks like his property. So I think he's worked out an agreement to shift that lot line on the other side of the tree line. He wants to acquire it as part of his property and make this lot slightly smaller. This side lot is owned by the gentleman that owns this house over here as well. So it's just a vacant lot that sits within our rural residential district, but is technically non-conforming.
And just to be clear, this was a township-created non-conforming?
100%.
Right? I just want to make that clear on the record and for the footage on TV. You know, you talked about being a sizable non-conformant, but it was created?
Yeah, it was created by the township. When we go before the zoning hearing board in February, I'm going to lay all that out there, that this was part of our comprehensive rezoning. We've had a couple of these situations pop up, and we've addressed them as needed when people come before us. If they need to get a variance for this to make the subdivision plan happen, I think we're going to give a favorable recommendation from staff.
So in the past, when something like this has come up, a similar situation, have the variance been approved?
Not always.
Okay.
But they typically come with a favorable recommendation from staff. We have one similar situation that's currently in appeal at Washington County. Appeal case was actually heard this morning, so we'll see how that works out.
But are you referring to a non-conforming lot getting more non-conforming?
I'm referring to a township-created non-conformant, but then when somebody wanted to do something else, trigger the requirement for the zoning, because otherwise, this would not have required a zoning hearing board approval if not for the change, correct?
Exactly. If this was low-density residential where it's half acre minimum, we can come right to planning commission council.
And do you know whether this exact situation has come up? A non-conforming lot size triggering a zoning hearing board approval when somebody wanted to shift a lot line?
I don't recall it coming up too often in the past. I can't put my hand.
We have had a couple township-created hardships that we've dealt with in the past.
And I assume that's the basis for the variance request, is that it's a township-created hardship?
Yeah, like, you know, looking at what these lots are, obviously have five acre minimum for these lots just isn't applicable. And so we understand that the hardship was township-created and really just probably within reason to grant it to them.
And does this property, someone just kind of sit in the middle of where we did the whole five acre requirement? They just kind of plopped in unfortunately?
Yeah, when you do comprehensive rezoning, it's never a perfect process, and you can't get every lot right, and these situations happen.
And when we did that, we tried to lessen or not create non-conforming lots of record, but in the areas where we created the rural residential, which is two areas of Peters, there are some non-conforming lots in there.
Right, okay.
Any other commissioner comments or questions? Any audience comments or questions? Hearing done. May I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission recommends the Charleston-Nixon lot line revision plan, subject to the four conditions stated at the end of the memo.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item 8, planning commission recommendation, Easton-Caudle-Bunker Hill Drive.
Joseph Easton, along with Brandon and Ruth Caudill, who own adjacent properties to one another on Bunker Hill Drive, are seeking township approval for a subdivision plan that would shift the shared lot line between the two and make one lot substantially larger and decrease the size of the other lot. This is also somewhat of a unique situation. We have a piece of property on Bunker Hill Road that has a very small amount of access to Bunker Hill, but it is usable and functional, and recently has been improved to grant access to this lot in the year. And this property is currently being marketed and attempting to be sold, and the Caudills, who own the adjacent piece of property, have seen an opportunity to extend the depth of their property in question. So the red line as shown on the screen is the existing shared lot line between the two lots, where parcel AA currently extends all the way over to the edge of the blue shape. And they're proposing to eliminate that shared lot line and extend it all the way back to line it up to the back edge of the property and make Lot 224R substantially longer in depth, up to just under 1.4 acres in size. These properties are zoned low-density residential, half acre minimum. As I mentioned, this parcel AA does have a bit of a unique form of access, but it is functional and is currently being utilized. Staff is making a recommendation that the subdivision plan be approved, subject to the three conditions listed in my staff report. Given questions, I'm happy to answer, and we also have Mr. Easton here as well.
So is the plan to put a permanent driveway along that narrow green strip there to access that property?
It's already there.
Yeah, it's already a permanent driveway.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. It was installed earlier this year through a grading permit and?
Yeah, so all that's been done?
Yep.
Is the applicant here? Did you cite that one?
Yes. Both Mr. Easton and Mr. Caudill.
Any other commissioner questions?
Well, I have one. So they'll be able to get all the utilities up through that, or they have access to all utilities?
You mean for parcel AA?
Parcel AA, correct.
Yes. Sorry, Seth.
Parcel AA is a Bunker Hill address?
Yes, it is. Line 17.
Hearing done. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval for the Easton-Caudle subdivision, subject to those three recommendations or comments identified in staff's memo of January 5, 2022.
I'll second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 8D, planning commission recommendation, ETSA Churchill subdivision, 974 Churchill Road.
I'm going to keep going with interesting subdivision plans. This is a piece of property on Churchill Road, technically two separate parcels of land. They're shown on the map as one parcel of land. I think they were consolidated for tax purposes at one point in time. It was a common practice done by the county, but it's still two parcels of land owned by the Peters Township Sanitary Authority with a house on it, so they're currently acting as property owners and landlords. They purchased this property a number of years ago with identifying a potential for a future pump station in this area of the township, and they're now coming before the township requesting to subdivide off a small portion of land to reserve space for a potential future pump station, and then sell off the house and the other remaining residual parcel of land. This is another subdivision plan that did require a variance from the township zoning hearing board, and it has been obtained. Two separate variances were granted at our November 16, 2021 hearing, the first of which is for an 18-foot variance to the minimum required width of a flag lot of 50 feet, so they only have about 32 feet of lot frontage on Churchill, and then a 3.35 acre variance to the minimum required lot size of half an acre. So what they're proposing is a .15 acre parcel of land with 32 feet of frontage on Churchill to reserve space for a future potential pump station and sell off the other residual remaining parcel of land. As part of that, the zoning hearing board, really the only additional condition they had on this, this kind of originated from staff, is if they ever determine that this pump station's not necessary, this small piece of property is going to be reabsorbed back into a larger piece of property and just become one parcel of land. So we don't have this .14 acre of land sitting out there. If some reason ever gets into private hands, they think they've got something to build on, and a bigger issue later down the road. So if we ever determine that it's not necessary for them to continue to own it, then it's just going to become part of the other parcel of land. Zoning hearing board variances are already granted, so we're now going through planning commission and council process. Staff is making a recommendation that the subdivision plan be approved, subject to the three conditions with two subconditions listed in my staff report. Happy to answer any question. We also have Enoch Jenkins, the manager of the Peters Township Sanitary Authority, here to answer any questions if you have any.
So is that house occupied or it's unoccupied at this point?
The render's just?
Do you want to introduce yourself again? So that we focus on 3D.
I'm really not sure. Enoch Jenkins, Peters Township Sanitary Authority, I'm the manager. Yeah, we've had tenants in there for probably 10 years. They just moved out in November, knowing that we're looking to subdivide and sell the property, so that's our intentions are early this spring to put it up. We have to bid it since we're a municipality to sell the property.
And I will say that I believe the third condition's already been addressed on the subdivision plan, the one that we have on file, but we can keep that on the report.
Seth, will you put the?
The subdivision plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll zoom in on it because you really can't see.
Does it show the house on the big?
Yeah, you can see it there. Enoch, do you mind standing up there and pointing up?
Do you want to put it up?
And they have, you know, that lot, that house, the driveway used to access that house is going to stay on that larger piece of property. It's not like we have a private driveway going across the sanitary authorities, what would be their new smaller piece of property. Everything's self-contained within that larger of the two parcels.
And our need to retain that property is, that portion of the township's not sewered, so as part of our 537 planning, there are several large parcels that will need sanitary service when they're developed. We've had numerous discussions with Bethel Park, which is downstream. They won't take the flows, so to keep it into our system, that's the only way we could get it out of the watershed, is back into our, is to eventually, it's going to be developer-driven. If the developer develops properties in the area, we'll be able to take flows into the station and push it back into our sewer system.
Okay, so the purpose of it then is to allow for future development?
Correct.
Why would it not be needed? I noticed Seth noted that if it's not needed, it'll be reabsorbed, but I guess kind of what's the, why would not be?
Well, if for some reason Bethel Park is able to accept flows, they would be able to go that way by gravity.
Gotcha.
That's the common line right there.
It is. Yeah, that's what complicates the property. We've been through that. It's part of it in Allegheny County, part of it in Washington County.
So is the whole piece, like, if somebody lived there and went to Peters Township, or would they go up the park?
Peters. Based on where the house is built.
Not by much. That's pretty close.
Depends which door you walk out.
I think there's hope someday that Bethel will allow us to maybe flow that way, because there's land in Bethel that needs to come to fresh run, so.
Yeah, in general principle, I'm fine with this, but I don't like the open-endedness to the point of just long-term, who knows when, we'll decide one way or the other.
I guess.
You know, I understand why that is, but it just kind of leaves it.
I guess in staff's mind, you know, it's only going to stay in the sanitary authorities' hands for as long as they think that they need it.
Yeah.
And if they don't need it, then we don't want it to go to anyone else. We just want it to become part of that other parcel of land.
And so I just want to make sure, so it's clear that if it's not used for that purpose, it has to revert back to this property? You can't go out and try and sell it, and then it'd be a non-conforming of a non-conforming?
Somebody thinks they can build a house on it.
Because it's not going to have the frontage, and so those are the only two choices.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's all part of the variance conditions. That's all listed on the subdivision plan. It's pretty clear from our perspective that that's the only option that they have, is pump station or give it back to the other piece of property.
That was my question, that the variance conditions in the note on the subdivision plan is a strong legal instrument to ensure that that is the case. That's not my expertise. But if that is, then I'm sure.
Would that pump station require, like, access and things like that as well? And so then there'll be an access point that would also, that under normal circumstances?
They would have separate access in that 32 feet of lot frontage out to Churchill.
We've actually even gotten preliminary approval from PennDOT, because we wouldn't need an HOP to access that, and they gave us for a driveway permit to do that. They wouldn't, since we don't have a driveway yet, but they gave us essentially future approval for that.
And where's the access for the other parcel?
Right, right about there, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think it's a rail driveway. It comes in here.
Okay. I mean, when they want to put another driveway in, is there going to be a site distance or as far as them being too close together, is that going to be an issue?
It is not.
Okay.
How long is an HOP left? How long is the HOP good for, this driveway? If they don't build it, is it three years, five years, does it expire?
I think you get three years, but they've been pretty liberal with extending because of COVID and all that.
Sure.
The note on the plan says, if it is decided that no pump station shall ever be constructed on parcel C, that parcel shall be reabsorbed into proposed parcel B.
Did you say the terminology is shall? What you read under some, trying to follow along, just as long as the terminology is shall?
Yeah, it's not a?
It's a shall.
It's a shall?
Yeah, shall.
Any other audience comments? All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Peters Township Sanitary Authority final plan approval subdivision be approved, subject to the three planning staff recommendations set forth in the January 5, 2022 memo.
I'll second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 8D, planning commission recommendation, Monalakis wall height, 3836 Washington Road.
Jimmy Monalakis, owner of 3836 Washington Road, is coming before the Peters Township Planning Commission for a second time as part of a potential modification from the Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance for retaining wall height as part of the potential development of that same property, 3836 Washington Road, which is situated right at the intersection of Route 19 and Old Oak Road. A similar request was made in 2018 for a retaining wall height modification. Currently, per the ordinance, this is a subdivision and land development ordinance, so it's not a variance, it's a modification, planning commission council. Maximum retaining wall height is 6 feet across the board, but it does allow for some modification and kind of a little bit in there, it talks about it, for commercial uses. In 2018, there was a recommendation of approval granted by the planning commission for a very similar design to what we're seeing this evening. However, once it got to the council approval process, it was tabled for some concerns about traffic circulation, site distance, landscaping, those types of things, and it kind of sat in limbo for a while. He came back to us earlier this year with a minorly revised plan, but we were able to, working with the applicant, to address some of those issues that were originally brought up by township council. However, we thought it was prudent, since some time has elapsed since that initial recommendation by the planning commission to bring it back before you and run through the entire process once again. Retaining wall height that I'm talking about here, at its maximum height, maximum highest point would be 23 feet in height at the center of the retaining wall, which is pretty close to the center of the property, about in this area here, and then tapers off to about 19 feet in height on this side of the property, and then about 20 feet in height as you get closer to Route 19. One thing I'd like to mention, however, is that due to the topography of the site, when you're on? One thing I'd like to mention, however, is that due to the topography of the site, when you're on Route 19, you're actually pretty much at the top level of that 20-foot wall. So it's not like we're looking at an additional 20 feet of Route 19. It's pretty much at eye level, if not below it, when you're sitting in your vehicle. So one thing to take into consideration as part of the modification request. The applicant has provided a landscape plan that is intended to address some of the concerns of planning, of Township Council, and, you know, what is going to be planted at the base of this wall and the other side of it to mitigate the visual impact as much as they can. And I'll let the applicant and his consultant speak a little bit more about the specifics of that landscape plan, but in terms of Township staff's opinion, I think they've put together a pretty nice landscape plan and some potential images of what the retaining wall could look like in terms of block style and fencing on the top of it. In regard to traffic circulation and site distance, the applicant's traffic engineer has confirmed through a study as prepared by the Township's consulting traffic engineer that, you know, this is not going to be... The big issue from council is that it could potentially be a cut-through from Old Oak through the adjacent commercial property, or vice versa. And that adjacent commercial property is Chick-fil-A, PNC, it's a...
Chipotle.
Chipotle, sorry, Chipotle. I was thinking Chipotle in my head, and somehow Chick-fil-A slipped out. Chipotle, PNC, it's a very, you know, active center, a lot of traffic in and out of there. The concern with council at the time is that people are just going to use that cut-through and go down Old Oak and get back another way. They ran the numbers and they concluded that it's not going to be a net benefit in terms of distance travel or time saved, so they do not foresee this being utilized as a cut-through, at least from the commercial properties down to Old Oak. And in terms of site distance, you know, they've put together a potential site location, entrance, an entrance location that meets the site distance requirements. They were, they had to go out there and trim some trees and do some very minor cleaning up to make sure they did achieve that site distance, but it has been confirmed to be there. What we're looking at tonight is just a modification request for the retaining wall. The applicant's intent is to obtain the modification, build the retaining wall, relocate some sanitary sewer utilities, and then market it as an effectively pad-ready site for someone to come in and build on. So we could potentially down the road see a pure site plan for the remainder of this site after the modification and retaining wall are constructed. Staff is making a recommendation that the modification from the subdivision land development ordinance in regard to retaining wall height be approved, subject to the six conditions listed in my January 5, 2022 report. We have the applicant and his consulting engineer here to answer the questions you may have.
So can we just step back from it? So right now, it's a six-foot maximal?
Yes.
Right, okay. And then why does it have to be 23 feet?
I'm going to let them speak on the particulars on why that height is necessary.
Okay.
So before they speak, can you, could you tell us, or do you remember, what's the difference between what we recommended in 2018 and today?
The 2018 approval was very little, very little. It's changed, we've seen some improvements, I think, to the landscaping, maybe a little bit more detail on what that wall design looks like. The main concern since then has been the traffic, circulation and site distance, and that's been...
The cut-through traffic, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. But the, you think it's been an improvement on the landscaping?
Yeah.
And what was your recommendation after that?
Planning Commission's recommendation was favorable.
Yeah, we... Yeah, it got to council and was taped.
Hi, members of the Planning Commission, Joe Young with Harshman C.E. Group. Seth, could you pan back to the first sheet?
Yeah. Give me a second, it's slow on me.
Okay. So what drove the use of the taller wall? Were the features downland of the wall, primarily the PTSA sewer easement? There were some wetlands that were part of PTSA sewer construction that Mr. Jenkins was nice enough to share with us, and we've put these on here. And also the 50-foot offset for the stream. So all of those are shown, and we've shifted the wall back to avoid those features. We've also drawn the sewer in such a way as to connect it from the adjacent property down to a connecting point that's down along the main sewer there, while also missing the wall with that connection. But that, that's the reason for the request.
Mr. Young, what is the elevation of Route 19 approximately the intersection of Old Oak Road?
So I believe it's, right here is about 976. This is 974, right there. So as you're driving south on 19, looking to the right, you'd have about a two-foot lower wall. This actually sits down in a hole, kind of...
Yeah, I was trying to understand the elevation 19 is what we would see.
Yes. Even with that, we feel that it would still be a good idea to show the landscaping. Even as you pass, you wouldn't see the face of that wall very much with the proposed trees and shrubs.
I got to jump in real quick. It's a hole.
It's a pit.
It's a pit. Who said pit?
What's the elevation at the bottom?
Yeah, what's the elevation at the bottom?
Down where the road meets, where your driveway would meet at the Old Oak, right there, yeah.
The base of the wall here is 952. It's around the 940 range.
So how many...
It's 976.
It's a 30-foot drop.
976, and the intersection of where your proposed driveway is, is 940, usually not...
Yes. That was part of the struggle with the site distance because it snakes around and it's such a steep gradient. But it is down there a good ways.
Where all the fill come from?
Go ahead, Dick.
Where were all the fill come from for the, behind the wall?
We're going to do some excavation behind. We may have to import some, to be perfectly honest. We haven't gotten that far, as far as where the dirt will come from, but there will be a slight imbalance. We'll need some dirt.
Okay, but...
What's the range of the wall?
Total, yeah, it was right around 300, between 300 and 350 feet, I believe. 23 feet at the tallest part, and I think around 19 feet at the lowest.
Okay, they can't fill the wall up and bring it level to Route 19 because of the wetlands, because of the sanitary sewer lines, because of an open stream channel. That's the reason for...
That was going to be...
Yes.
This request.
If my, if memory serves me correctly, I know several of us were here, but part of the discussion we had in 2018 that's totally relevant to this is that this site is essentially without a wall as similar to this, it is substantially undevelopable because of the...
There's really not...
The elevation difference. You're going to have to have a wall of some sort, correct?
Yeah, and you know, it can't even be a tiered system where one of the walls is closer to Old Oak because they're as close as they can be right now to the wetlands and the sanitary sewer lines. And you would lose a significant amount of lot depth if you did a second well behind this one. It's really kind of stuck.
We've shown conceptually parking and maximum building space, and we based the parking on that footprint. But it's pretty substantial what is required for parking. So to your point, we do need the horizontal space to build on to the fullest extent we can, based on the parking requirements.
Were there any other modifications granted for this particular plan? It is, thank you, Seth. Are there any other modifications needed for this plan?
The only modification that we're asking for is the wall. I don't believe there's anything site-wise, there are no setback issues. We'll have to go through a permitting process to get across the stream and all that, but as far from the township standpoint, just the wall height was the issue.
The trees proposed in front of the wall, have those been cleared by Peters Township Sanitary Authority?
We've been talking with Enoch, I'm sure that we'll have to make sure we're very specific on the tree types and what we plant. But that's, what we've shown is an attempt to avoid derisment to the fullest extent possible and provide something that's amenable to everyone.
Simply for your benefit, I want to make sure that if there's something approved that contemplates the simple landscaping screening, and that's not even provided for your further design, then that's not something that would be avoided, this particular modification.
Yes, correct.
I have a question, but I should have brought this up earlier. If ultimately council approves the wall, we're going to build the wall, but we should also require that that connection down to Old Oak be built at that time?
Yes, it will have to.
I don't see it as a condition here, so we need to add that.
Okay.
Seth?
Could you extrapolate on that with respect to constructing the wall? That'd be part of a larger land development plan, not correct?
What's that?
With the construction of the wall would be part of a larger land development plan, would come back in front of this board? Make sure...
Yeah, if we, if they get the wall height modification request from council, they're going to come back here with a site plan that's going to show the earthwork, the wall, and the connection down to Old Oak.
The bridge, all of that, yes.
And then it's going to be marketed for sale for a potential future development.
Yeah, I guess in my, in my narrative, I mentioned only one subsequent site plan. It's really going to be two, because they're going to come back for a site plan with the retaining wall and then build that, market it for pad-ready, and then maybe another site plan later on when they're doing a building and maybe some extra parking and landscaping and those types of things. So a couple more steps until we've got full blown construction on this site.
What's the proposed grade of the driveway that comes up to that?
I think we're at the steepest part, we hit about 10%. After, we have a leveling strip there to get across the stream at about 4%, then a small vertical curve, and then 10% up until we're in the parking lot. Then the maximum there is like 4% to 5% through the parking lot.
And the other thing I want, so when the building is built here, it will, and when you're driving on Washington Road, it will look like that building is at on that same level?
You'll see the building face, and the wall will be a couple of feet below the grade of the wall.
It'll be looking like right at the front of the building.
Almost like, almost like you're in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Correct.
And what's the distance from 19 down to the entrance there? How far?
About 250 feet, 250 to 275 feet from intersection to intersection.
Is there a committed cost for that wall?
We haven't gotten that far yet. We wanted to see, make sure that we got the modification request, but the client has been in contact with a wall manufacturer. That's where we got the photos from.
And so then I assume you guys haven't done any geo or anything like that?
Not yet.
Just to make sure, just figure out what's going on there?
Correct.
So we're suggesting that we add a seventh condition, that the road be approved as well?
Well, with the construction of the retaining wall, it, the driveway connection to Old Oak be part of that construction?
Yes.
A seventh condition that would say the site plan for the construction of the retaining wall include the driveway? It must include the connection to Old Oak.
Just to clarify, the entire construction will come off of Old Oak Road.
Right, it's necessary for your...
There will be, at first, there will be a temporary crossing put in. They'll get in there, do their work, and in the process of that, they will put in a full-size bridge and a nice entrance that meets the township requirements.
They're going to have to use it anyways, but...
Yes.
Right, but this, all of this of today, is all we're approving this, if you build, it can be 23 feet. Everything else that you're talking about would have to come back anyway.
Subsequent submission.
Okay.
If you design?
If you design, right, right, right. If you can design a 23-foot wall, that's all we're saying right now?
Yes.
So the elevation at the, at the far left end there, where you're at the south end, is that, what is that in relation to the adjacent property where the Med Express is? Is that like you could drive right into that lot?
So right, keep, Joe, that elevation marker on the, kind of at the entrance of the parking lot, that's 980.
980, yep.
So that's six feet above the top of the wall.
Right, but I'm saying, it looks like, and I just noticed that they have it lined out so you could drive right in from the parking lot of the new development right into the parking lot where Med Express is.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of the township's ongoing ordinance and policy about interconnection, interconnecting our commercial developments.
Yeah, so technically, if you were going to go to that building, you could turn right like you're going into Med Express and then make another right and be in their lot.
Correct.
Yes.
So the elevation...
That's a good...
The elevation at the top of the wall and the actual parking of the new pad, is the elevation of the wall several feet higher than the asphalt surface?
Yes, sir, so, well, no, the wall is really just a lit, well, you'll have the wall here, parking here, then you'll have the... Yes, we'll have, we'll have a very tall fence.
That's totally kind of lush.
Yes.
Okay.
But my only comment to this is, we've met the requirements from the submission to, you know, this is not preliminary land development, it's a formative site plan, it's simply a modification request. There's obviously some challenges from a design standpoint that I'm seeing that I think may not be fully flushed out. From a 23% from, from however high the wall needs to be, I understand that. It's just seeing some of the design concerns. I guess I'm willing to let them move forward, but there's a lot of challenges that they're going to have to come through, and then this board's not going to have the ability, or this council, this mission's not going to have the ability to kind of look at those a little bit closer, so...
Rock, can you...
Yeah, certainly. So the parking that's kind of in a, you know, curvilinear, curvilinear right there at the front, it's on a curve, that's going to be a challenge, the location of the fence, having constructed several of these walls, it's not going to be right on top of this wall. Maybe there's going to be footings and foundations and post holes and things like that, they're going to have to support the necessary turnover for a 250-pound guy, right? So there's going to be a lot of challenges there with respect to that section, how that's going to be constructed. It's not going to provide the driveway, unnecessary parking's going to continue to be a problem. There's some issues with it, we'll see through this, and then there's the whole stormwater management question to where that's going to go, putting stormwater management behind a wall, obviously, it's a challenge. So I commend, you know, the recommendations here for the kind of forensic geotechnical investigation and analysis. I think that's fantastic, it should be required for a wall this height. There's just a lot of nuance, the design's going to have to be considered. Once we see a formal plan that I think may need to be taken into consideration. It's hard to look at this now with such a narrow view.
I mean, is there, is there any type of condition that you would recommend that we could place on the modification approval that may give you a little bit more oversight during the site plan approval?
I mean, as long as we're okay with codes, it's just, there's some, there's some nuances in here where I can just see it, to be fair and blunt, if you know what I'm saying, Mr. Young.
I get you. Yep.
And I guess proving something to that level that I kind of feel that it might not work gives me some pause, from a site design perspective.
Understood.
Not the wall, think the wall's staying fine. It's what's behind it, can we protect what else needs to happen here?
Yeah, and to be perfectly honest, we didn't want to put a whole lot of effort into laying this out down to the, you know...
I respect that, and that's where I'm kind of coming from.
Yeah.
It's kind of off 40 to go, because I can see that they did a whole site design, site plan without this being vetted.
If you don't get it.
It's a challenge to move forward.
Right, step one is, is Peters Township Planning Commission Council okay with 20-foot, 23-foot, 23?
23-foot wall.
23-foot high wall.
Yeah.
Well, that was going to be my question, are there any other 23-foot high walls?
Yes.
On the border?
Zabo at Valid Brook and 19. There is, you can't see them, but behind McMurray Shops where Franco's is, and Lakeside Plaza where... With Starbucks, there are 20-foot high walls behind those commercial centers.
That's what...
But the highest one, most visible is Zabo over 19.
But with the parking there, is there a guard rail or anything other than just a fence?
There'll be guide rail and...
Would there be a guide rail here?
Maybe wheel stops?
Yes. And to extrapolate this out further, if, say, we have an issue with the parking back there in the curve, we would sacrifice a few spaces to make it work. I'm just simply showing what I feel the maximum build-out would be, and it might be a little bit airing on the larger side, but I think we could tweak it and make it work once we, if we know we're going to get the modification and can move ahead.
The only note I would make here with respect to, is we're only looking at the wall, and the issue from all that goes wrong with that would be safety fencing. I don't necessarily think, I'm a professional, remember what the code says about the type of fencing? This is aluminum, black?
I mean, I don't have the building codes in front of me, I think it's...
If we got a decorative wall, it's probably a decorative fence, not decorative, but...
Yeah, there's certain gap requirements that they would be required to meet, and we would, we would ensure as part of these site plan ultimate building permit that that's clearly being addressed.
We don't want someone falling off.
Oh, I agree.
The last...
Yeah, we don't know what's going to, it could be a daycare.
Could be.
My other comment is about the, just the dry... My other comment is about the, just the drive there going between the two parcels, you know, that's, I see that as, just to make a comment, I see that as, once that building is there, any heavy trucks or something like that, deliveries would not be going down a 7% grade to go up a 10% grade to make a delivery. They would turn in off of 19, so you have to have enough turning radius and space to make that turn and get back out.
Well, I imagine we'll deal with that.
Site plan will have a truck turning plan. The fire department's going to want to see that.
And, you know, if a large delivery truck comes in, they don't have to come in from Route 19, they can come in from West McMurray Road and wind through.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
There's still a number, there's still a number of traffic, just to Rocco's point, there's still a number of traffic things that I'm going to comment on, like, like you said, the curve in the parking, stop signs, turning radiuses coming off the Chipotle PNC side. There, we got, there'll be plenty when we see site plans.
And just from a procedural standpoint, there wasn't a requirement that they come in first and get the 23-wall modifications done and then go back again? That was what you guys wanted to do, just to...
It makes the most sense.
Just to see if that could, if that would fly.
Correct.
Okay. But there's no requirement that you get that first?
Correct.
I mean, I like it.
Just one comment on number three. I think that term should be, instead of fencing, it should be a guard.
Safety guard, okay. Or railing, or just safety guard.
Safety fencing slash guard, you probably catch them both. There's a physical component and there's a guard component, which is that more architectural building to it.
Okay, no problem.
Yep.
And just, my, my, I understand your purpose in coming in here early and kind of seeing if it would fly. For me, it's, the 23-foot wall is just one component of this, and so my hesitation isn't proving something that I would rather see as a picture. Financially, I get what you're doing, I understand it, but from a planning commission or a planning standpoint as a community, just doing this in all by itself and all kind of knowing the context for the rest of it, that's what gives me pause, just that you know what my concern is.
All I can say to try to address that is, we will comply with the modification requests and then further comply with any requirements you guys have when we move into more detailed design.
Sure, and my concern is once we do something, we box ourselves into, we can't change our mind and say, oh, that's not how I thought it was going to look.
Understood.
Or I thought it was going to work. So just, that's where my concern lies, that we're looking at a very narrow, without being able to see how that wall fits into anything else for the future development of that site.
Understood.
Just so we're clear, Ed and Seth, did we have a settled condition on this?
We did. Site plan in clear, the connection to Old Oak group.
Well, the wall construction, if the wall is approved for, by council for the 23-foot height, you're going to come back here with a site plan.
Correct.
That site plan needs to include the wall and the connection down to Old Oak.
It'll be a full functioning site plan that includes the entrance off Old Oak, all the way through to the parking lot, a grading plan with a maximum build-out area and the maximum number of spaces that can possibly be put on that grading pad, and a stormwater volume and a location where that would be. It'll be a full site plan.
Okay.
And of course, there will be tweaks to that to make it comply with what we need to for final design, but it will be in the confines of that modification, that's granted.
Ask you a procedural question that I maybe should have raised at the beginning, that is, when we approved this in 2018, one, I can't recall the height of the wall. I know we said it was similar, but was it?
I'm going to say it's 23.
23. Secondly, did we place any time constraints on the construction of anything with that approval?
Well, it never got full approved.
It never got full approved?
It was tabled at the council level.
Yeah, so, but we recommended approval at that point, but it never got approved at the council.
It got tabled at council for circulation, landscaping.
Yeah.
Could there be landscaping placed between Route 19 and the wall to help?
Possibly. I mean, we can look at that. We just wanted to show something conceptually that showed you it could be done. We can do whatever makes council have there.
It's a condition, that there be some landscaping there that...
And any plan I've been a part of that gets reviewed, you've always had, the township's always had the right to ask for where they wanted that, so I don't see that as an issue.
I think we'll see this again with additional modifications, is my humble opinion.
Additional modifications?
That's my opinion. No, no, just when the land development site plan comes out, preliminary approval, I think there'll be some nuances.
I, you know, I don't think, I think you might see it for variances.
Okay, fair enough, yeah.
I don't see other modifications that would come into play, because nothing else is sold out. Everything else will be zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Rocco, is there anything that you see, like, that you see might be an issue?
Yeah, but I'm not, this is probably not the forum to do that.
Okay.
Not to have a designer view, so I appreciate where you're at. I think I'm relatively supportive of it, understanding the expense it's going to take to design this and get it up to speed to know what modifications we're going to need, given that I don't see this being developed, this site being developed without a wall. That's kind of the big question here. Do you want the site developed with a wall or do you don't want the site developed?
That's a good point.
Yes.
Talking to our engineers, our township engineer, Mark Sumitas, he said this site cannot be developed without a wall.
Yeah.
This is it.
There's no way to do that.
And in the lead-up, in 2018, we had done several concepts to try not to do the wall, and it, there was just no buildable space.
We looked at this as well for a mattress firm, it just wasn't happening.
Part of that is because the wetlands, the sewer in there, but there's an open stream channel that DDP will not permit to be enclosed.
Oh, yeah, the restrictions are natural features and elevation.
Yep.
Any additional, any more questions or comments? Any audience comments that we haven't addressed thus far? Here, none. None of motion?
I'll make a motion that the modification request for the Manolakis wall height recommendation be approved would be recommended by Planning Commission, as outlined in the memo dated January 5th, along with the seven conditions, the six noted there, and the seventh one being that the site plan will include the wall and access to Old Oak.
Can we add guard rail to item number?
We modified number three.
Item three would also include safety fencing slash guard for railing.
How's like of that motion?
I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
None in favor?
Thank you.
Good luck.
I have eight, I have eight F, a nine or three conference here, the PT, Water, and Water.
We have a development team interested in potentially acquiring and developing, you know, two pieces of property, but we're looking at it as one whole site near the intersection of Galley Road and Waterdam Road. This has been a piece of property that's been of some interest.
Kind of.
Jim?
Sir?
You guys can go outside.
Sorry, Jim.
These microphones are really sensitive.
Thank you so much for your time. As I mentioned, this, this piece of property has, you know, it's been out there for a couple of years now. We've seen some interest on it, but this is the first group that's really, you know, tried to latch on to it and move through the process. However, as part of it, the potential developer, Mayor, has identified two sections of the township's zoning ordinance that they believe are kind of directly in conflict with current development trends and how they foresee the site being developed in regard to specifically multifamily residential development. And, you know, we've had multiple conversations within these past couple of months, and as staff, we've come to a point where we agree with their analysis of these sections of the zoning ordinance, and that, you know, they could potentially be modified or completely removed, and, you know, not be a hardship on the township for any future development. These might be good things that we need to take into consideration. The first section of the ordinance is in regard to dimension requirements in the mixed-use activity center district, specifically just for multifamily residential development, in that it currently limits new development to 36 units per structure maximum in the MA1, which is what this district is, and then 24 units per structure in MA2. You know, this was put in with part of the comprehensive rezoning that I mentioned in 2017 earlier tonight. As I'd also mentioned back then, back with the rural residential property, sometimes when you're, you know, doing comprehensive rezoning, there are issues that are going to pop up down the road. It was identified at the time that, you know, we're going to see these types of things that we need to address in the future. And we've done that up to this point as part of some, some rezoning amendments here these last couple of years. And, you know, this is one that they see as a serious issue for the potential development of this property, and, you know, staff tends to agree with them. I think when you potentially have this limiting factor for multifamily development, you could end up with a barracks scenario where, you know, current trends for multifamily development, at least of what they intend to do here, maybe some larger units with some accommodations and community features, and that you could have too many buildings split throughout the site instead of, you know, a nice consistent facade across most of the site itself. And I'll let them talk a little bit more about it. I'm already getting two of the weeds on the staff opinion, but we tend to agree with them on both of these. The second section of the ordinance is in regard to offshoot parking and loading, again, just for multifamily development. And it states that at least 50% of all parking spaces have to be enclosed on three sides. The applicant has come to us with a conceptual site plan that does include some covered parking, but, you know, they just, from their perspective, it's not financially feasible to achieve 50% of their required parking to be covered, whether that's in a parking garage underground, whatever that scenario may look like. And, you know, again, as staff, we recognize that sometimes these facilities don't always end up looking the nicest, maybe aren't maintained as well in the long term. And so, you know, putting in a requirement that we install large parking garage or individual parking stalls might not be prudent for new multifamily development. So, again, staff is favorable of these potential ordinance amendments in terms of our process moving forward. This is just kind of a come before Planning Commission, get a general idea of what your feelings are on it before they go to council, and get an ultimate decision from them if this is something that council's willing to pursue in terms of an ordinance amendment. At that point, we would work with Mayor to craft what this new ordinance would look like, and then come back to Planning Commission and council and work through our public ordinance amendment process. We have the applicant here to answer any questions you have. They have some exhibits put together. Someone had him off again to kind of run through what they, they think they see this site looking like.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
So the applicant is not the owner of the property at this point?
Not the owner of this property. They are a potential developer of the property.
They have it under agreement.
It is under agreement, because I guess just from a standing issue.
Yeah, that's correct.
Underagreed.
It would, huh?
Underagreed.
It is underagreed.
It is under agreement, okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Good evening. My name's Pat Byrne. I'm with Al Nyer, and I'm here today with Sean Donnelly, Gateway Engineers, and Lauren Wright with POH Architects, our design consultants. Thank you to Planning Commission, Planning Staff for allowing us this opportunity to introduce our concept and, you know, overall how it aligns with the zoning ordinance and, you know, a couple of the conflicts that we've identified in working with Mr. Coons and Mr. Zook. And first, I just want to say that, you know, we're very excited about this project, the potential that it has. We feel it can make a very positive impact on the township and community. We feel that it offers a new quality housing product that doesn't exist in the township, and will add to the greater housing options, greater housing diversity within the township that, you know, we believe is a need, and it's identified in the comprehensive plan as a guiding principle. And we think it's very complimentary to the adjacent retail and surrounding uses. You know, all that said, we're, you know, we, we've just got this under agreement. We're in the early stages of completing our due diligence on the site and our conceptual design. We've included in our exhibit our preliminary site plan. You see here, and Lauren, I, you want to talk through it, but, you know, we, this by no means is our final iteration of the plan. I think, you know, this needs to see further refinement, but this is pretty close to what we think, you know, we're trying to achieve here. We would be seeking approval for four stories and a mix of surface and structured parking. You know, this would be an amenity-rich development with courtyard, pool, fitness center, multiple business conference centers, a pet area. This is a project that Nyer is currently developing in Nashville, that while these are not elevations for this particular project, I think serves as a good character reference of what we're seeking to build here in terms of finishes and facade. This is a project that POH Architects have designed, again, a helpful reference for the type of amenity and courtyard that we're trying to build. We're looking to include adjacent to the courtyard, a tenant lounge, similar to, similar to this, that would be two stories with a loft. And this would be comparable to Class A developments and, you know, consistent with contemporary trends that we see in the national market, but also locally here, whether it be in Cranberry, South Point, you know, Ashby, at South Hills Village, these type of Class A suburban developments that are four or five stories, elevator, rich with amenities. And, you know, we, we think really that it's what we're interested in building, that Class A, and we feel like that, you know, that's what Peters Township deserves, is this level of multifamily development. As Seth mentioned, there's a few really critical conflicts with the, with our concept and the current mixed-use activity zoning ordinance, the first being the 36-unit maximum per structure. And, you know, while we fully intend to comply with all the density requirements that are contained in the zoning ordinance, we feel that this unit maximum per structure really limits our design and limits us from developing what we see as a Class A multifamily development. We would not be able to achieve the same level of amenities that are integrated within the residential component of the development, or the shared tenant services that you'd see in comparable developments among Class A projects. Strict adherence to this, this rule would really force, you know, a series of eight, nine individual cookie-cutter structures sprawled throughout the site and likely additional parking structures in order to meet the shelter parking requirement. And I think this unintentionally reduces the appeal of the development and it forces a design that's really contradictory to the goals of the comprehensive plan, which, which really wants to prohibit cookie-cutter-type multifamily development. In terms of the sheltered parking requirement, we will meet the minimum parking count in terms of stalls per structure, and we do fully intend to include structured and sheltered parking. What we're struggling with is the 50% sheltered and roofed requirement, which would force us to build potentially a four-level garage of more than 300 stalls in order to, to meet that requirement. And I think that that would perhaps unintentionally force us to create a mass that's visually unappealing and unnecessary for the scale of this development. You know, we really, what, you know, our request is that this, and just to give you some con... some context of where we think we'll be, I think we're going to be in the thirty percent range of meeting that requirement of sheltered on three sides and roofed. But we typically see this being driven by market demand or site constraints in order to meet the total unit count and not so much a, you know, blanket minimum shelter requirement. So those were really the critical conflicts, I would say, to, that we've identified early on in the process here before advancing our design. And again, thank you for the opportunity to allow us to, allow this forum to solicit your feedback and thanks to Mr. Coons and Mr. Zook, you know, for their help in identifying these and talking through this with us. You know, I'm happy to answer any questions or, you know, if needed, you can have Sean or Lauren.
How many units do you anticipate in your conceptual thinking?
We think we're going to be in the range of two-hundred-and-fifty units.
And your total parking looks to be, if you get the two levels, three hundred?
We require one and a half per multifamily units. There'll be three hundred and seventy-five spaces.
Yeah, I think three seventy-five would be the total parking count based on two-hundred-and-fifty units.
So, from what I'm, what's the price range that these would normally fall in?
This would be, you know, we would have a mix of one, two, and we would have a small percentage of three bedrooms with this demographic. We would have a larger portion of two bedrooms than you, you know, than you typically see in urban developments. So we'd end up at, you know, around fifty, fifty-five percent one bedrooms, forty to forty-five percent two bedrooms, and a small percentage of three bedrooms. You know, the smallest units would be, you know, in the range of twelve-hundred per month and with the largest units being in the range of twenty-two, twenty-three hundred per month. And really, that would be, it's determined by the market and what we're seeing in comparable projects, you know, locally and in similar townships, communities, school districts.
I guess the, just what, the reason I wanted to ask that first was it led to my second question. Seth, did you say we require one and a half parking spaces per unit? I guess my, just my concern there, and I really don't care about covered parking, I think we're fine with that, but my concern is more is if we're talking about, you know, in Peters Township, more type of luxury apartments, how many people, if you have a couple living there, only going to have one car? So you're talking about a price range where, you know, people are gonna, and we don't, we're not in an area where there's public transportation, everybody drives everywhere they go, and we're talking about one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, how, you know, how many times are we going to have somebody living there by themselves where it's only one person versus the far majority of those being at least a two-car couple, family, whatever you want to call it? So that was more when you said it was a hundred or one and a half per person?
One and a half per unit.
I don't know anybody in Peters Township that doesn't have at least two cars if you're, you know, I mean if you're...
I get what you're saying. I guess I would be hesitant in the world of over-parking more often than necessary, adding more spaces than the ordinance requires.
And commercially, I usually agree a hundred percent because there's like three times a year that you need that much parking, right? For day-to-day housing, it's a little more of a concern if you've got to have people and the whole goal is this to be someplace where there's a traffic for people who want to live, you know, close to nineteen, and we're talking about apartments that are not your cheap apartments, there's nobody there that's walking.
Well, I can address this because we do, yeah, I'm Lauren Wright, Piper O'Brien, our architects, senior vice president, and I run our Pittsburgh office. So we do this kind of product all over the country. And in general, the general operators that run these do not want more than one and a half per. And this is regardless of suburban, and when they go into urban markets, they're actually at point seven to one, in that range. And the reason behind it is there's a growing trend for those that are moving into these areas that are in this type of product, they're more of an apartment home. So take away the mindset of the old three-story walk-ups where you had a two-bedroom, you had a roommate and two cars. Uber is a bigger part of it, and we're seeing more and more and more of those tenants using less and less vehicles, to be honest with you. And drive share, park share, all these other things are changing all of that. So that dynamic is proven across, not just with Nyer who we work with, but we work with a couple of other developers across the country, and they're all targeting one-point-five or less. And it's being approved all over the country, in the suburban and less in the urban market. So we're very familiar, and that's a number that they can back up with the different operators that are available, that they can absolutely make it work. Not to mention, you're not looking at a hundred percent occupancy. They're generally running their numbers that are ninety-three to ninety-four percent occupancy rate, so there is some flexibility in that. So that's the reason behind the one-point-five. It actually works very, very well. I was skeptical too, trust me. I mean, living in apartments in my time, the mentality has drastically changed. And one of the other reasons that we're looking at this product versus the standard of the thirty-six unit, for example, is that's still based on the old three-story walk-up. This is a more desired product, and it's become the standard, excuse me, standard across the country of a four-story amenity-rich development that leads into a development like this, that brings it together and has some community aspect of it. The old-fashioned multiple building with huge parking fields is less and less and less desirable and will continue to be so.
From a conceptual, from a how it works standpoint, I hundred percent agree with you. I don't, the idea of people, it's just that, you know, those are just my initial concerns.
And it's a very valid concern, and we've run into this many times, and what we generally do in that situation, because, for example, I've done a couple up in Cranberry recently and even further up where they have the same concern, they want a one-point-seven. The operator provided letters that basically said, "We operate at a one-point-five, and here's how it always works," and it does. It's amazing that it does, but it actually does.
And this is, I mean, this is not a product we have in the township, and it might draw a totally different demographic.
Correct.
It's here now, and to this point, won't be driving as much.
What's your level of density on this particular site?
It is unlimited.
And realistically, the two-fifty mark is a very good sweet spot for all operators. They don't really want to go too much more, and they don't want to be less than two-twenty because it has to do everything with staffing for leasing, et cetera, that they can actually properly operate for that configuration. So you want to be in the two-twenty to two-sixty range to be a truly functioning, good development for this much acreage, in all honesty.
How big is this property?
It's approximately twelve acres, really less than eight is available, is with some of the natural barriers, is a hundred-and-fifty foot repairing buffer to the south of the parcel. There's some identified wetlands that, you know, that as an out, we're not planning to disturb.
That's good.
Yeah, this actually, this overlay...
Yeah, show the room. And the front portion of this, knowing the way that the ordinance reads everything you want to do, this is still likely dedicated in some kind of a retail function. Looking at the rest of the site, there is a lot of retail around it. This thing, you think complements it, and pulling back and situating a building back from here gives us a little bit of privacy and removal so that it feels, has a residential feel, but we still think we can justify having some kind of retail feature requirements. And you've got plenty of it around here. The retail environment is not the greatest of the world right now, as we all know. But we have the infrastructure there to be able to accommodate that down the road.
It's unlimited, are there open, are there...
It is not limited in terms of density.
Right. Are there open space requirements at all?
There's buffering requirements, there's internal landscaping, there are setback requirements, there's step-back slope requirements, there are other things that, through our hybrid form-based code, do limit the overall size and height requirements.
And I was just going to add one back for, if you want people coming to move here, you want it to be, I can deal with that.
Correct. I mean, if you look at some of the product for the display, we're very conscious of the aesthetic of what we're doing here, and we guard it very seriously. We want to make this attractive and, as Patrick said, a very, very much a Class A product.
Yeah, and this is one of the few districts in the township where we do actually have some architectural standards built into the zoning ordinance.
And I have extreme confidence we'll meet every one of those. I mean, the process, the way we do it, we don't want a big, massive building. It may have a lot of size to it, but we will break up the elevations appropriately. And I think some of the images you saw demonstrate how we would approach that.
I know we met earlier, it was planning commission and it was council, and weren't there some discussions about the, how many the floor maximum because of, what's my college?
Yes, and that's our town center district.
Right.
This is mixed-use activity.
Yeah.
So at the time, there was, you know, we were focusing on town center as part of those conversations because it's more centrally located here in the township. These mixed uses are more on the periphery of the township and some areas that could see potential for higher density development, taller structures that contextually might be more prevalent.
And I totally agree that this site is situated very differently than the one of us that where you're, you're in the two feet from the road or whatever, so it doesn't have that same imposing look to it. But is there any concern from the height, you know, just from the elevation? Then again, with, if that four stories, it just kind of rises out of, you know, nowhere compared to the rest of the...
You know, similar to the town center district, we have, you know, height requirement of the step-back slope, even taking into consideration the existing elevation of the site. I mean, I think it's, what we're seeing would be a high-quality development at that intersection. I don't personally think it would be, you know, an isolate in regard to mass or height.
Don't get me wrong, I think this is exactly what we need.
I mean, it's the hole, it's the hole in the donut if you look at the site. I mean, really, to activate that and to charge it to help support the immediate retail isn't such a bad thing.
Could you talk about your business model in terms of, are you a developer that holds product, are you a developer that leases up and then flips product? What's your kind of business model?
Yeah, so we're a commercial real estate development and design builder. So we, anything that we develop, we also build, and we typically, for multifamily developments, will partner with an operator early on, typically as a joint venture partner who will come in and, you know, pawn us completing the project. They, we would sell it to the operator, and they would hold it long-term. They would be the leasing and property manager.
I should, thank you. I have a question. The, some of the renderings that we see here, they're five-story. What's the stories, how many stories are you anticipating?
Four stories.
Okay. And I don't see anything that shows what the parking structure looks like. Do you have anything that...
We're assuming a precast parking structure. Yeah, we're still, we're still considering the layout of that parking structure, and, you know, we have a latest iteration that we just developed...
East or drying on it.
Right. But we're looking at condensing the footprint of the garage and perhaps wrapping, not completely wrapping units around it, but making it less present in the development and having units fronting it, fronting that garage so that it sits back and...
Yeah, we disguise a lot of the internal side of that with units and understanding that probably the backside towards the retail side, we could do some kind of a decent landscape buffer or something to landscape that up. Regardless, the idea of the structure is more in support, and we're trying to reduce that height so it has even less imposing impact on the site, where the units become the statement. And when you're looking at it from a distance, you're going to see units greater than above, regardless. I don't think you'll even notice the garage with the retail that's adjacent in the distance from the ones that are chasing.
So this is a, is this the second story of this parking structure also covered, or is that open?
Have you?
Okay, so only the bottom layer of it is?
To try and bring a roof over that is really cost prohibitive.
Well, no, I'm just looking at the math and seeing, you know, what you're, how that, how far that's going to go. And you said thirty percent, but if I, you know, looking at how many parking spaces I see there and that only one of them in the gray zone is covered, that's not a thirty percent.
Well, and that iteration is not.
Yeah.
The most recent, where we tucked it, it actually gets smaller on one floor color, and it's integrated in, so it actually will more closely achieve that thirty percent. You just don't, we're literally playing with boxes right now to get to the numbers. The bigger variant, the bigger aspect here is to see that we can get through some of these two items so that we can make a comprehensive site that actually makes sense. We're going to come back. It's like this is, there's nothing here for you guys to really rule on beyond those two things because we want you to, we want you to see the development, but we want to know that we can actually achieve it, and these two roadblocks are kind of entrances to that at this point.
Key, that's a key point right there.
A lot of process.
What was the reasoning behind saying we only wanted thirty-six units per building and wanting a fifty percent coverage? What was the reasoning behind that at the time?
That was all incorporated into a township-wide rezoning, and to focus in on that, I can't remember exactly what the reasoning was, but what I did point out back in 2017 when we did this comprehensive rezoning of the township, I said that expect us to come back with amendments as we work with developments. Because we know, it's hard to write an ordinance...
Oh, no, I understand that. I'm just wondering, it's in my head, why we, why we wanted fifty percent covered at the time and why we wanted, what was the thought process behind that, if anybody remembers?
I struggle to justify and come to reason the fifty percent covered parking more than the...
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. To me, the thirty-six, I guess, makes sense on paper that you want, you don't want a massive building that's taking up a small site, you maybe want to break it up a little bit. But I think it probably causes more conflict with what you actually are able to do on a site than what the intent is. The covered parking, I do struggle to understand why, what the true intent of that was because if you're doing, you know, the bigger your development gets, you're just getting a larger and larger covered parking structure. At some point in time, it might be bigger than the actual building, so...
They are counter...
I was just calling it. I don't want to see a big parking garage. I just like...
If anything, if anything we should do, require a fifty percent underground and then...
Under the pulps. Under the pulps.
As long as you got a place to put the dirt, that works.
Trying to find an area to tuck in a big covered garage, and you're asking to let this walk half a mile to get to the apartments, and they're not allowed to do that either.
They can only do so much to pretty it up. There have been some developments where you wrap the units around the parking structure, but...
We're wrapping a portion of it. To wrap all of it means you have to mechanically ventilate it, and it becomes a lot more complicated. So in the most recent iteration, we actually have two sides covered with the open side towards the retail, which has the landscape, and in that case, it's only three stories. And in most of those cases, that's eight feet per story, it's only twenty-four feet. I mean, your, a normal retail building is taller than that. So in our opinion, we think we're doing the right thing here, and if the buildings for the, for the multifamily come up a little higher and you can see them from the road, we don't think it's a bad thing. I don't know how many people are familiar with McKnight Road area, where we did the Cosmopolitan there, which was a five-story. That's five over one, it's total of six.
That's the podium structure.
Correct. And if, and the site required, in that case, when you're down on McKnight and you look up, you can just see a little bit of it coming through the top, and it actually fills really nice comparative to everything around it. It sits into there, into landscape. Well, we think this would be the same case here.
So what is it floor to floor in the garage?
Generally, you're going to be, you need to have a seven-six clear, and then you have the structure of twenty-four inches roughly. So you're eight, nine, eight and a half, nine feet, and then you're popping up from there and it's out. And there's some slope. It's hard to say the exact one because you're building in slope pancakes, but you understand.
Seth, you go into, in your memo about the conceptual, where the fourth story of those buildings are, and I'm just curious if we could locate that, because you said they're over a hundred and twenty feet from the nearest property line.
So, yeah, that's...
And I was wondering if that's changed because...
It may have.
They're fairly close to the property line, and I'm guessing that they're not just going to put their four stories back in it. So if you could talk about where your, where your thinking is right now as far as...
Yeah, I scaled this out. This was about a hundred and twenty feet. This was that nearest point.
We still want to hold this because we really like the idea of having some surface available. In our most recent version, this parking deck actually turns up into here, it actually occupies here, and these units turn and face it. This building is actually split into two.
Pan out.
So we have a drive that would come up through here. Now, granted, if you haven't seen that, we have it. I could pull it off my phone real quick, so it doesn't help you. But nonetheless, the idea is that we're screening this off. We want to keep this buffer because we think this is good because it's not a retail development. And then also, when we have our four stories, because you guys have some rules about heights and step backs, by being off of that, we think we've kind of kept the intent. I understand fully why you'd want to step back on something that fronts a piece of property lines right on the road. It doesn't feel opposing. If we step back enough, we think that allows us to do the four stories all the way around, which gets us to our proper density.
My thoughts also go towards, not so much this side of that property, but, you know, what's the difference already in elevation between where Ace Hardware is of the property? I mean, are they fifty feet above Ace Hardware, and then we're building a four-story building on top of that? The top two floors of your building are going to look down over the top of those, those buildings. I mean...
It sits higher than...
I think, I want to say it's like twelve or fifteen, if I recall correctly.
Not fifty feet.
And we argue it's higher, but you've got to take the angle of the view from that from the car. I think you're going to maybe see the top floor.
Okay.
And ultimately, when we get into the site...
Yeah, like I said, I think something like that, like a top floor would be fine, where you can see maybe one story. I just, and that's kind of what I thought this, you were kind of referring to in your, you know, if you build something right on the property line that's four stories tall and, you know, the property, the elevation change is already... and, you know, the property, the, the elevation change is already great, you're all of a sudden building a, a huge structure that can be seen from Route 19 that towers down. And I don't think that's what anyone wants and I think you would have a lot more flags, not from us, but from council to get anything passed as far as in that regard and just giving the hassle to. They've experienced over this, and I know it's a different area, but they experienced a lot of, uh, blowback from the structure that was built here in the town center, given that it towers over our road.
And that makes sense in the town center to this particular aspect where we're 120 feet off here and then we've got a whole retail bump before you hit 19 that has a 25, 30-foot structure bump. If you're in your car, looking on that angle, think about the height tapes to get up there to even show one story. It's going to be pretty significant.
Yeah.
But we'll demonstrate that as the design development.
It's just the daycare.
Yes, that's premature, yep.
So all of this would be four stories is kind of what we're getting. Okay.
The only place we may take advantage of, site falls in this direction. There is a possibility that if we can, when we pull this in, we could reduce a floor of the parking deck we might park under here, but that's working with the site and really is irrelevant to the overall aspect of seeing it from outside of the site. It's more of an internal aspect. That's the only variable we're playing with right now is how we look at it.
So are we, are we asking at this point to reduce the 50% to a, to a, to a maximum?
We're on a ready to decide.
Are we asking first?
I mean, I think my ultimate recommendation, if we were to continue down this process, would just be to strike those two requirements completely.
Well, let me, what this is, we're going to go to council with the same pre-conference kind of atmosphere and get their feel for changing our, and amending our zoning ordinance in these, the 36 and the parking.
And they might drive what that change looks like.
So I guess Mike was, for today, what are we being asked to do?
We, when we go to council, we want to know what planning commission.
Overall opinion is?
What your opinion is on the potential changes.
But not a vote.
Not a vote.
No recommendation, no vote because that would come.
The consensus of council or the consensus of planning commission was that they were comfortable with pursuing an amendment that, you know, eliminate that 36 and, you know, maybe go to 30% covered parking as opposed to 50%.
Or even 25% and then look at the opportunity of a variance or a conditional situation.
That, and we're going to go to council like this casual kind of discussion to see if council's willing to consider it as well. We'd like to be able to let planning, we'd like to be able to let council know what planning commission's opinion is.
My opinion is, I, I'm always so hesitant because I've been just, we get one situation where we agree like, oh, this doesn't work here and then we just strike it completely because that's another area, somebody goes back and says like, oh, this is why we didn't want this here. So my recommendation would be more that we move it towards like a conditional use type of scenario that if, you know, that there's certain conditional use requirements and if you meet those conditional use requirements, then you don't have to have the 36 or you are, that way then, because then you have the opportunity that if you meet those conditions.
We could talk about.
And you get the approval. If we haven't removed something that obviously at some point in time, somebody felt that was a reason for. So that, that's just my thought.
Well, four stories is a conditional use, so they'll be in the conditional use process. Are you, we'd still have to amend the zoning ordinance though.
Yes, but I'm just saying, I don't know that I would say we get rid of the, you said the 36 unit so that nobody has to comply with it because it might be another area that needs to be developed. It is a lot smaller, it's a lot different. I'm saying that it may be, it'd be a conditional use. But I'm just, I, I've flushed it all out, but I'm just saying, I don't know that I'm for completely getting rid of these requirements across the board for any area that this, that those requirements were intended to cover at the time. Here, I agree with all, but I don't know that I agree that it's eliminating it from the ordinance in entirety.
I may add, I mean, that's, I understand your valid point. I think a lot of the times when I've seen these ordinance, specifically around the 36, it's based on, on a former standard for what apartment homes are. In fact, it's more apartments. And I think the term that was presented, I think one of you guys said it was the term barrack. That is the exact term that matches the older format that 36 units generate. And there's nothing wrong with that back then, but I don't see that product coming back. Probably in the, if ever, in the, in, in the foreseeable future. So you're going to see this more and more and more. And I think you're going to end up having a delay process if you don't move to change that a little bit. That's just my opinion from seeing in a lot of municipalities and being through this process, that that is a bit of a hindrance.
I guess to your point, Michelle, with all the other requirements that we have in place in terms of setbacks and step back and height, I guess not really for density for this district, I think we can still achieve what we're trying to do with the maximum units per structure without having that in place. I think it's an unnecessary extra step that I struggle to envision a scenario where it's really necessary.
And I get what you're saying. I guess my point is just from a commission, from a planning commissioner, from a community standpoint, a conditional use, just as somebody that had to present these, from the term that you could land use, had to present these, conditional use as a, as a representative developer made you go through a few more steps. But on the other hand, it blocked the, you know, the commissioner, the board's drivers from saying you still like it because if you meet those steps, you're golden and they have to approve.
Prove on special exception.
But you don't, unless you go two more steps, special exception, variance, whatever, it allows you, but it doesn't, it still leaves a little bit of control. And I don't know whether it should be 36, whether we up to 42. I'm just saying like, I don't know that we would want some sort of an optimum number, you know, that we don't want to then have one that's 158.
Yeah, and 36 is a tough number.
Honestly, we don't, we couldn't change the 36, but I'm saying we might want to have a number still there so that it doesn't leave that wide open. Just my thoughts.
What, what is the mixed use activity zone? I, I can't recall outside of this area of the township, are there other?
Yeah, and it's split up.
Other areas that are developable with, like, I guess my question is, it's getting to, what is, if we remove this, what would be effective? I mean, if this is the only parcel that is developable for two, for a, you know, a multifamily, uh, property in a mixed use activity area. What would the repercussions be? What are the ramifications?
Yeah, it's, it's split up into two sub-districts. So this bright blue here, this is our site that we're looking at. The remainder of the bright, bright, bright blue is all mixed use activity one. And that's the 36 units per structure.
And that is largely developed.
Most of that, that is largely developed.
Largely developed, correct?
I would say it's 90% developed. Uh, we have mixed use activity two here, which has some undeveloped property along East McMarry Road, but that's a different sub-district. Uh, and then we have some additional MA2 near the, at the intersection of Valley Brook and Bevout. And then this property was recently developed at the intersection of East McMarry, Bevout, Thompsonville. This is Confluence Financial Partners right here. They took advantage of MA2 and then we have the gas station, the property behind it and the adjacent property and that is.
And that's a building already, right?
Yep, yep, yep. I think the gas station is ripe for redevelopment. Um, it's just, what is that, what would that end up looking like? And then I think, is this MA2 here as well on Hidden Valley? Yeah, we have some MA2 here on Hidden Valley.
But MA, MA2 is different than MA.
The other option of course would be, um, you said it's an unlimited density, right?
That's correct.
That would be something that if you still wanted to impose something just so that it's not the wild west, you could, we could, we could invoke some sort of density requirement. I don't know what that would be sitting here today, but if you wanted to strike the 36, not put something there, but we also wanted to make sure that somebody couldn't cram 451 bedroom apartments somewhere, which is not at all what we want, we could, we could impose some sort of density requirement or something like that.
I personally speaking, am not really a proponent of limiting density because we have other criteria in place. There's parking requirements, there's.
Floor area ratio.
Floor area ratio, buffers, setbacks, step backs that reduce in building height, that tailor your density down without directly limiting your density.
That's a good point. Yeah, you're letting all the structure around it dictate what give you the.
That's what the Form 8 code does. It says, okay, we like this use, but we don't want to restrict the use too much. So let's do design criteria that tailor it the way we want it to be.
Yeah, then you can only fit so many units in and provide so much parking.
You have to do stormwater management, you have to do engineering, there's all these other things that come in.
So there's other constraints that cause you to design accordingly and, you know.
As we all know.
Between the size of the buildings versus the size of the parking.
And as we all know, in Western Pennsylvania, topography plays a huge role. I mean, we have no flat sites anywhere, so.
For control, you release it, you know, I mean, a little water, people are happy to say this, but you know, I always make just a balance of, you know, giving developers the ability to come up with, you know, good design that gives the community some opportunities that there's, because once you have a use and it's permitted, as soon as somebody meets that criteria, you're done. It means I just, I'm always just against just, just crossing things out, you know, across the board because of, because it fits one scenario, that's all.
So is the general consensus of planning commission that you're comfortable with?
Moving forward at least at this point and entertaining a conversation.
Well, I'll kick it off by saying I'm all for it. Um, I'm for striking the 36 nuts and lowering the parking and coverage. So yeah, I think it'll work in that, in that spot. It'll work, work just fine.
One last point, and, and we've discussed it with, um, these folks, is traffic also limits density. There are traffic issues here that need to be addressed, so.
Yeah, here at the intersection of Galley and Waterdam, we have a traffic impact decap improvement project that's been identified that needs to be addressed and.
You know, with 200.
Part of this conversation of developing the site.
250?
Mm-hmm.
That's going to take that intersection down. What's it functioning at now, level?
F minus.
E, F.
F.
It's going to take it to.
Minus, minus.
So that needs to, that intersection needs to be improved. And, and they know that.
Is there another, uh, district where we have a 50% parking like that?
So that's, that's township-wide. That is not just for mixed use. That is out of our overall standard for parking for the entire township. So every multifamily development in any zoning district has that 50% covered parking requirement.
So what's the difference between the MA1 and the MA2?
There's. Different uses, different building heights, different setbacks.
MA2 is a little bit less impactful than MA1. It's kind of one step down in terms of high density and high impact development.
I mean, I'm, I'm in favor. I'm quite having that conversation. I, I think we could probably come up with something to make this work for these folks. I, I, I completely understand Michelle's point in not wanting to just wholly remove something that is great for these folks, but may have ramifications, you know, unless we readdress, if it never gets readdressed in another rezoning like we did in 2017, it could have ramifications 10 years from now if we don't, you know, but I, I mean, I also understand the, the need to, for modern, you know, more exclusive, up, upscale apartments to, to not want to do small 36-unit buildings, you know, to, you know, sprinkle throughout the property.
Just not when you're looking.
Yeah.
If you're down to four floors, I mean, 36 units on four floors, it's just, that's silly.
And elevator all of a sudden, some other components. It gets very.
They're spending my money on hallways than anything else.
Exactly.
That's just. And I'm, I'm all in favor.
Give me a big piece of.
I mean, I think covered parking is overrated. And, and development, I mean, it does nothing but hinder the, hinder the development.
You can go to Vegas or Florida, just look at the amount of those that are poorly maintained.
So our next step would be to go to council sometime in February, either our first meeting in February or our second meeting.
Okay.
And we'll see what council thinks and we'll let you know if this is going to move forward. Okay, folks?
Thank you, everybody.
Good luck, guys.
Appreciate it.
What other?
Go ahead.
Question on the, on the two additional, the step back and setback, is that something that we just continue to work through?
Yeah, I think so. Um, just a bit of planning commission. I mean, Aaron, you talked a little bit about the step back slope approach, step back slope. We identified with them that, you know, what that requirement says that you have to have that fourth story step back 50 feet from the facade line fronting three different roads, Route 19, Waterdam and Galley. Because zoning ordinance does not define the use of the word fronting. Doesn't say what that means. And so we're working in this interpretation limbo right now of, you know, is that intended for if you're right up against the road, is that fourth story step back? Or even if your building's just facing it, does your fourth story facade have to be an extra step back? And I think in what the scenario they provided where that building is 120 feet from Waterdam, it really doesn't necessarily make sense to have to have that extra step back because the building itself is already so far away deep down.
So the fact that step back says fronting, it's our opinion that these buildings are not fronting, therefore they don't have to have a step back. That's our interpretation of the ordinance.
I think you have a good argument considering there's parking between both of those roads.
Right. It doesn't front on modern.
I think, I think you're, we've, we've done that since the last meeting. So those, it's.
There would definitely be.
Around the entire perimeter, right?
Yeah, definitely between that park and.
And there is existing trees to the south and north of the site.
Right.
Cause one of the things you showed was that parking lot on the one side and there's going to be a buffer between that parking lot and the road, right?
Yeah, and there's some natural densities already there.
Okay. Same thing. I think, I think your biggest burrow is going to be the four stories, like Aaron pointed out. I mean, that, I know the topography of that ground and I, that'll look like a mini Mount Washington, which I'm okay with in that location. I think that's going to be the bugaboo, you know, for council simply because of the, you know, the discussion we had over there, so. My thought is asking about the, you know, buffers or some kind of landscaping, because that'll give it a distant, more.
And there are decent trees behind where Grande, that Grande.
Ace Hardware.
Yeah, Ace Hardware, you know, they have decent mature trees right there now.
Basically how fast a decent tree is really tall.
Yeah.
Go cut down that Christmas tree and bring it in, you'll understand exactly. Done that, made that mistake once.
And this is a separate section of the ordinance that we're kind of working through in interpretation as well right now. We define a 20-foot minimum setback, 25-foot maximum setback in this zoning district. But in parentheses, it says for purposes of courtyards, plaza, outdoor dining areas, et cetera. I'm still struggling to understand if that means that it's just, that 25-foot maximum is just for those like subuses or if it's for the overall development? Because in this situation, if it was the overall development, they're greater than 25 feet away from Waterdam, so that would require a variance. But I'm still working through them. What, what, what are we intending here? What's the interpretation of the ordinance in regard to that specific dimensional requirement? I'm not quite sure why that was put in parentheses there because to me it muddles things.
So besides the 36 and the parking, there, there might be some other tweaks that we need to do to accommodate this type of development on this type of property, which is 12 acres and you could only build a max of 25 feet setback, then the buildable area of the property, you can't build there. So it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I think it's, it's obvious that that was intended when you've got, when you're just establishing a nice streetscape, you've got some properties that are available right at the road, you push those buildings closer to the front, maybe parking in the rear, pedestrians in the front. I mean, that's the facade, the streetscape you're looking for in the mixed use activity. I mean, that's the facade, the streetscape you're looking for in the mixed-use activity when you've got a property like this where it's kind of isolated on its own further back and there's some utility issues, it might not be as perfect.
So there's a lot to work through here.
Will they be held responsible for any of the mitigations and needs on the intersection?
Yes.
Is that, like Mike pointed out, it's an F minus.
We think that they're, if they want to do this development, they're going to have to improve that intersection or.
Contributor. What that is looking like.
Well, they got to go to PennDOT, that's a really good.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think your point that we have some things to work through is an incredibly, incredibly on-point thing because we don't have any, I'm sitting here trying to think, I don't think we have anything like this in Peter's touch. It is the kind of thing that we wanted to encourage with the comprehensive plan, you know.
And we've gotten there.
In our zoning laws that we wrote, precluded.
Yeah, I mean, I think to Seth's point, the 25-foot maximum in this area, especially for this development, doesn't make any sense, right? I mean, with this property.
If they were building a new connection road through, maybe it would make sense, but that in itself brings up some totally different issues.
Right.
So the important thing tonight is we think we hear that you're liking the direction that we're moving toward. We're going to see what council thinks and if the council's have the same opinion as planning commission, then we'll start working on an amendment.
Yeah, I don't know how else to question, but I think, I think that'd be.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you all. Anything in the planning portion?
No. Other than, we got a lot of plans in the pipeline that are coming.
Not a lot have been, at least in terms of residential, have been officially applied for. We can't divulge too much, but there's a lot coming.
We've been having a meeting, or we've been having a lot of pre-application meetings with developers, so there's a lot of potential new developments on the horizon.
New developments or expansions of old developments?
New developments.
New developments, one expansion. We've got, I would say 300-plus lots kind of in the pipeline right now.
All single-family?
Excuse me, I'll play that one. One, one project, single-family attached, the rest detached.
Now, we have two townhomes developments on the.
Oh, yeah.
On the, in the pipeline and other single-family developments in the pipeline.
Any more noise about the property across from the Oak High School or the West Coast High School?
That's one of them. They, they are going, they're going to PennDOT with a scoping meeting here next week.
Yes.
Well, I mean, that property falls right dead into the MA2, right? We just talked about the 36.
Yeah, there are mixed-use activity there.
But they're doing townhomes.
Are they?
No, they're, they're MR overlay, mixed residential overlay.
Okay.
Just wanted to point that out.